I will introduce myself to this young fellow.
Yeah, I've actually been thanking you.
So how was your long day?
She's a hot tire.
I bet.
You tried pushing strong across.
How about you? They canceled my package this morning, so.
Oh, they did?
It was too cold.
Well, that window blew where it was last year.
Yeah, it come right off that white peak over there.
Oh, yeah.
On the northwest, northeast.
That was probably a good idea to cancel.
And so they canceled it, but I thought we were in there. And I gotta give a check to our trusted, the toy makers. Landis gave us two hundred, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, great.
So that was nice of them. Buy more wheels than actually.
There you go.
They keep on kids getting sick, so they keep on using it and getting more.
It's gonna bring off.
There's nothing wrong. So this is for. John got a hold of you again. John?
I was hoping to. He said he talked to you. White pants.
Oh, yeah, he was here.
He had to go teach the class.
Yeah, yeah, John. Yeah, I talked to him.
So how's Nada?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing good.
My voice is, it's the park, it's just sometimes a few sounds away.
Is it, right?
Yeah. Sometimes I have trouble putting sentences in my words, too. I can't say I don't think it's a little tired, seeing these ones down trying to make it. I have to really think it through.
I have the same problem.
Yeah, I know. Can I still be able to blame it on something?
It's all there for me.
Haven't you ten years old?
Yeah.
I should be so lucky.
They'll come around.
Well, I hope, I hope it does. Long as I can still play softball and cut wood and make sawdust.
Making sawdust.
Did you hear that? We're gonna grow spinach?
We're gonna grow spinach?
In our test farm.
Yeah. Okay. I thought it was good.
It's done well in my garden. Yeah, yeah. It's done well in my.
You know what? You know what? Spinach uses a lot of water. Spinach uses a lot of water.
They say it does real good in Yuma, but they can't, they can throw water right off, off the river.
That's right. But you move it up here, the weather may be right.
Yuma can grow anything, as long as they get water.
That's for sure. That's for sure. That Holtville Yuma area, that thing.
My home stomping ground.
Dawn and lawn.
Dawn and lawn.
Dawn and lawn.
Oh, hi, are you guys having a meeting?
We were, we were hoping to sometime this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right.
Have it, had it?
Yeah, I got you before.
That's not good.
You're still alive, yeah.
Jamie, you're ready to go, aren't ya?
We be ready.
Okay.
We be ready.
It's saying to end your season. All right. All set?
Yes.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ms. Lewis, may we have the roll call?
Good evening. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Wojcik.
Here.
Councilmember Hatch.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
And wait your turn.
A little bit ahead.
Vice Mayor Croft.
Here.
Mayor Marley.
Sorry. Trying to steal my thunder.
All right. We hopefully act like adults here.
Why?
Item, item number two. Presentation and discussion of proposed wireless tower installations at the town hall, recreation center, and library. Ms. Mayday, I believe you're out.
Yeah, there we go, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. This is a brief PowerPoint regarding a proposed wireless project. Basically, what the proposal includes is two Verizon cell sites and two town data dishes that would be installed, and then the installation of an additional tower, actually a monopole at the library, and installation of two town data dishes there. The construction of these towers will improve service in the town for Verizon customers, provide coverage to Safeway and other locations along Highway eighty-nine, where if you get back towards the pharmacy, you just dropped the call. And it will also cover, create some coverage for any events that we hold at Old Home Manor. The construction of the town-owned tower, tower at the library will provide installation of town data dishes, which will eliminate the need for the Cable One fiber optic system that we're currently using for network computer systems.
Okay.
So these are the proposed cell sites, or tower sites, excuse me. This will be a lattice site at the library, and then the cell sites at the recreation center, over by the pool, and then town hall will be monopoles. We do have some existing cell sites here at the south end of town, here kind of in the middle, and then again up towards the other end. These will augment the, the service from Verizon and potentially other carriers. So this is basically how the sites will interconnect, and it creates a wireless data connection between buildings rather than the fiber optic, and will save rent, it'll save us some money, anywhere from eleven hundred to twenty-two hundred dollars a month, and approximately thirteen to twenty-four thousand dollars a year. The terms of the proposal is that Sun State will be building the towers. We, the town, will be providing the materials for the tower at the library, and we will not be paying any lease fees for the tower space. This is the recreation building location, this is the existing recreation building, and then this is the footprint of where the tower site will go. Here's the fifty by fifty pad, basically, that the, the actual monopole, and then the building where they haves all of the Verizon equipment will be. This is a brief summary of the proposed deal structure. The, like I said, the two fifty by fifty sites at the town hall and at the rec center would be at no cost. We will provide the design and materials for the construction and installation of the town-owned facilities. We're estimating it to be twenty-eight thousand dollars. Chino will not pay, the town will not pay any lease fees for positions on the towers, for data dishes, and then we will not pay for the installation of the lattice at the library, or the installation of the data dishes. We do have Chad Ward here from Pinnacle, and Spencer, if you have any technical questions that you wanted to ask?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Go back to your drawing, are you showing that one cell tower that was being constructed at the rec center?
This one.
I was trying to figure out where everything was, that's all.
This is, this is the actual footprint, not this.
Right, but I was in reference to where everything else is.
Oh, here's the, the existing rec building.
Okay, good enough.
The pool would be back up over here.
Thank you. I was trying to figure out, and you changed it real quick, like, but, okay, I got you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm having trouble getting, my voice is gone. Are there any fees that we're going to incur on a monthly basis with this? And is this a forever, we're not gonna have to pay anything?
Yes, that's, that's true, yes. And Spencer can talk about the wireless service.
Are we gonna pay anything for the wireless service?
Could I jump in?
Yes, sir. While Spencer's coming up, go ahead.
Phyllis has already drafted the contracts, and those contracts will come to you as part of your review and approval of the proposal. Basically, we're trading. Normally, the town would charge a lease to the tower company to put a tower on the property. Normally, the tower company would charge us a lease to put something on their pole. So we're, we're making a trade here. We're not charging them for the fifty by fifty space, they're not charging us for the spot on the pole, and they are doing all of the installation and construction work on the stuff that we need, and they're not gonna charge us for that labor either. We have to provide the materials, but they won't charge us for the labor, for the construction. So.
So are they going to charge us for wireless service?
No, the, well, you will have to subscribe to wireless service through Verizon Wireless or whoever's providing service.
I'm asking about the town, Mr. Manager. That's a direct question. What other costs might we incur? Are we going to have to pay for any, any service for using that at any time?
Okay, good.
No, the, we would own the dishes, we would own the wireless equipment that allows us to have our computers talk to each other. Neither one of us are charging each other a lease. We would have to maintain our own equipment, but that's the only cost that would be involved in the, the process, and we would eliminate the ongoing charges with Cable One.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to make sure Ms. Hatch's question got answered.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're not looking at any hidden costs. I mean, you're saying nothing for this and nothing for this, but nowhere are you saying there's no additional cost.
All right, thank you. Spencer, did you have anything to add to that, as far as if, if we own the dishes and we're beaming the information back and forth, we've pretty much cut out the carrier, correct?
That is correct. If you recall, when we went to Cable One, it was because of the fact that when, when we needed the extra facilities, like the one here, the one at the community center, to service those buildings, you have to have some sort of connection between them. And to allow them into the backend services of the town, you have to bring them in internally through some sort of private connection. And that's how we had went with Cable One, to obtain the private connection between this facility and over there. If we were to expand into that new facility at the community center, if we were ever to expand our presence to a greater extent, or do anything much more data intensive, we would have to do the same thing there. Thus, you would see the increase in costs, and we'd have to do another private connection. The problem has always been height. You gotta get up in the air seventy feet around Chino Valley just to clear the tree line, just to get any kind of private point-to-point connection between two facilities, that's about the height you have to be. Well, tower costs and construction costs for towers are quite significant, and so this allows us to get that height we need, to produce that connection between facilities, to pass the data traffic and the phone traffic that passes over the same connection for us, and allows us to continue to do our business as, as we would, and to try to eliminate those lease fees that you will continue to pay forever. So this is actually a very, very strategic cost-reducing move for the town that would help to benefit us in the future, continuing to lower those costs for us doing business right on into the future.
Okay. Before I take any other questions from folks, I had a quick question. In the situation and analysis, it sounded like it would be a two-year payout, but Ms. Mayday said that it may, it may be twenty-six thousand a year that we may save? Is that, did I get that right, Ms. Mayday?
Currently, right now, with Cable One, we pay out one, one thousand one hundred dollars a month for that private connection between this facility and the facility at Town Hall. If you multiply that by two, if we were to do the community center, there you're getting to that twenty-two hundred. Right now, we service it through a lower-speed connection between that facility and town. If we were to put more staff there, or do anything more significant, then we would have to up that connection, and that's where the eleven hun, the second eleven hundred would come in to bring that us up to that twenty-two hundred that we see per month.
Okay, thank you. So it's not an, an, an actual twenty-two hundred, but it would be a potential twenty-two hundred?
Yeah, and, and it's actually somewhere in the middle. I, I, excuse me, it's somewhere in the middle, because we already pay a lease to another carrier, actually, for a slower link between those facilities, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Wojcik, I believe you're up next, and then you have me.
I have a question about what looks to be like something state. Is that a state facility that it's pointing to, or what am I looking at here?
Which one? This here?
Right, and goes up to the center section of the pad there.
It says, that's proportionate to Sun State.
Oh, it got cut off when we did the, it says, it should say Sun State, but when we squeezed it onto the slide, it just got cut off to state.
And what is Sun State?
Sun State is one of the companies that we'll be working with.
They're probably building a pole.
This young fellow in the audience that we will be asking technical questions to is first, with Sun State, correct? All right. Okay, any questions on this side?
Yeah, so our return on investment is probably about two years after we get this thing rolling. So it may be, what, a year for construction?
Two, two and a half, maybe.
So about three years you ought to have, ought to break even.
Okay, thank you.
It is extremely beneficial to have height, especially in an area like Chino. Because we're so flat, and we don't own a ton of hilltop property, it's, it's really, really a beneficial thing to have some height, to be able to provide those data links. A lot of other municipalities, towns, they struggle with the same issue.
So our Sun State man, what will this do for reception locally for private companies?
And when you get up to the microphone, if you would, please give us your name again, Chad.
Sure. My name is Chad Ward. Address is fourteen twenty-six North Marvin Gilbert, Arizona eight five two three three. Good evening, members of the mayor and members of the council. To answer your question specifically, right now Verizon is gonna be installing, I believe, at the recreational center first. We are building two towers, one here, one at the recreational center, which will be owned by Sun State. And then we're gonna build the third tower for the town, which I believe is at the library. Is that correct? You guys are gonna provide the materials for that particular one, and we will install it, as Robert discussed, basically at our cost. That's kind of part of the package deal that we've kind of put together, is that Sun State will incur all the material costs for the two main tower sites. They will do the installation on all three tower sites, including all the microwave equipment. And then Verizon's gonna install at the recreation center, and my understanding is they are probably looking at maybe a two thousand sixteen install at this location. It's basically for them, it really depends on budget. So you'll see some significant coverage improvements over in the rec center, and probably about a mile and a half radius around that. And then once this facility goes in, you'll see immediate improvement along Highway eighty-nine and also this facility as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is only for Verizon if another carrier wants to use the tower?
They can, they can use the tower. That's why we've designed it. If you see, there's, there's one box for Verizon, like a shelter equipment building is what we call, and then on the other side of the tower, we've designed it for another one, and there is space to add a third if a third tenant wants to come in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me make sure I got this correct. We, we provide materials for one tower, and then you folks provide the materials for the other two, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We, we're providing the materials for the rec center, and then also for this facility. We estimate the, with the materials and installation costs, just for the tower itself, to be around ninety grand. So we're basically, we're taking on all that cost. I haven't ran the numbers on what the install cost will be for the library facility, but probably another, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand right there. So we feel like we're giving some benefit to you guys as far as purchasing the materials, providing the install for both locations, then we will also do Verizon's install at the rec center.
Okay. Thought I saw, yes, sir.
I have a question. All right, going back to the last slide, it said twenty-eight thousand dollars was the cost for the materials for us to go ahead and.
That's what I saw. That was an estimate, and also I did mention to Ruth that, 'cause we do buy quite a bit of materials for communications facilities, I'm gonna try and see if I can get a better price on the tower for you guys. And if that's the case, then, you know, we'll work out some sort of repayment on that end, but that's something I'm looking into as well, so if I can save you guys some money, I will.
Okay. So basically, with what we're paying Cable One right now, in two years, it should almost wash. All right.
And it sounds like you'll have some better connections at all your locations as well.
Mister. Okay, this is obviously not my business, so.
Sure.
Some of the questions that I have, is this, I guess, to put it bluntly, why are we paying for that one tower anyway? I mean, if we're, I'm looking at industry standards, so just explain to me why, you know, why it's working out the way it is. I understand if we're trading space for bill, how is it that we're paying for the one tower?
That's a great question, and tangentially related to that, the library tower won't be a cell tower. It's just a tower to hold the town's antennas, so that we can make our systems talk to each other.
Okay.
So the budget that you guys passed this year included this twenty-eight thousand dollars for a wireless project for the town. The, the real jewel in the crown is getting that tower at the library where our servers are, because once we have that facility at eighty feet, we can wirelessly connect, whatever we can latch onto and get a clear line of sight to that tower, we can make that wireless now. We don't have to have a fiber connection with Cable One. But Verizon didn't have an interest in creating a cell tower at the library. We needed to get our equipment up so that they could talk back and forth to each other. So part of the twenty-eight thousand is to buy not an industry-standard monopole, but probably a small lattice tower that will allow us to get our dishes up in the air at the library.
Okay, now on that same structure, will other people still have the ability to?
At the town's discretion, and, and we've already talked to the fire district and the police department and the sheriff, so there may be other folks that want to mount something up on that steel. The antennas that we're looking at are, it's like a pressed fiberglass product, it's like a fiberglass sheet that's been formed. I think they weigh about fifty pounds or so, it's thirty-seven kilograms or whatever that, thirty-seven kilograms, I think, is what they work out to be. But yes, the, I mean, the short answer is yes. If the fire district wanted to mount something up there, we could work out an arrangement with them to let them do that.
Okay, and would that be a potential income to us if other people wanted to tie on?
You could rent that space out. You could consider that. I, I, it's your tower, your vertical position, if you wanted to rent it to them, you could.
It might get in the film, that typically with other divisions, whether it be, you know, a fire department, sheriff's department, or so on, we would probably do some kind of barter system or something.
Well, there's been an awful lot of horse trading so far.
Okay, all right. Well, it's still an asset.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the really cool thing about it, Lon, is we have a tower where our servers are, and it would make it very easy for us to create another wireless link somewhere else to serve another town facility. Okay.
Okay. No more on this side. Yes, sir. Mr. Wojcik.
The senior center up there is Wi-Fi with Cable One. What happens now?
Um, well, their Wi-Fi service and the Wi-Fi service here, and the Wi-Fi service that they're providing to the public works lobby, so, so developers can come in there and work, all that's no charge to us, it's under our franchise agreement, and it will stay the same.
That's, that's all fiber optic though, right?
Well, actually, that goes through their cable system. I mean, we, we don't have to pay anything for that, we have a franchise agreement that makes them provide us that service if our buildings are within a certain distance of their system. That's like free internet, but that's very different than having one of our computers talk to a server that's also ours. That kind of a system is more private, it has to be more protected, and the data has to be sure. You can't have that going out on you.
But, but that connection is via fiber optic in the ground, not.
That's right.
Towers.
That's right.
But the more secure connection would be the towers, what we're looking at, correct?
Yeah, we, we can't use, and, uh, we have to go fiber if we're going to connect our servers to our computers in another location, if we don't have this wireless connection that's ours.
Okay, great. Any further questions on this side? No further questions on this side? Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Sure.
Appreciate it. All right. Well, since we are only having discussion and gaining information, did you have any closing comments, Ms. Mayday, on this? Okay, on to our next item.
One of the portions of the UDO that we're looking at doing a rewrite on this year is the sign ordinance. As I pointed out in my staff brief, which I won't repeat, there are myriad problems with this portion of the UDO, and it's constantly being tweaked, and rather than continue to do that, I think it's time that we just take a step back and completely overhaul the entire thing. So the Planning and Zoning Commission has had one work study for this, for the signs and signage. I wanted to go real quickly through the PowerPoint presentation where we discuss, discuss the different types of signage, and where this rewrite can go. And then I do have some examples of how the town's ordinance looks in different formats that we're considering. So first, we're looking again at a, a series of work study sessions to talk with P and Z about what the current regulations are, get feedback from the community on what works and what doesn't work, reorganizing the chapter to make it more user-friendly, and review proposed changes. That alone is gonna take at least three meetings, if not more. The planning and zoning meetings, of course, once we get some language written and vetted through the town attorney, we will then bring it to the public hearing for the standard public hearing process through P and Z to make a recommendation to town council. We do expect a number of work study sessions with town council, probably in March, April. So one of the most frequent questions we've had is, if we rewrite this, is it going to take the signs away I have, that I have now? And the answer is no, sort of. That if you have a, a sign that now conforms with current code, or is a legal non-conforming sign, then you're fine. If you have a, a sign that is not in conformance, or does not have that legal non-conforming status, well, then you're not gonna have protection later on. So people always say, why do we have to regulate signs in the first place? Well, when you don't, you kind of get this. And it's confusing with a state route running through the middle of town, and the traffic flows that we get, and the speeds that people drive at, it's, it's difficult to, for people to find their way around town, it's hard to see some of these signs, some of these larger signs, like the four forty Plaza sign here, have so many little, smaller signs, tenant signs on them, that you can't really read them if you're driving down the road. You might be surprised that there is a labor-ready facility, which is a, a temporary labor service at the four forty Plaza, but if you're somebody looking for a job, driving down that street at forty-five miles an hour, it's pretty hard to see. So the sign, the UDO now defines a sign as any identification, description, illustration, symbol, or device which is affixed directly or indirectly upon a building, vehicle, structure, or land in which identifies or directs attention to a product, place, activity, person, institution, or business. These are all examples of what we call freestanding signs. There's a couple of different types. You have the banners, you have this is a pole sign, this is also considered a pole sign, this is a monument sign, these are menu boards, so these are all the different kinds of freestanding signs that there are. These are all wall signs, you have directory signs, you have, of course, building identification signs, what company is in there. You have signs that project from the wall. We have all kinds of portable and temporary signs. We have vehicle-mounted signs. We have electronic message boards. There, there are non-planar or figural signs. So the sign, uh, the, uh, UDO now defines a sign as any identification, description, illustration, symbol or device which is affixed directly or indirectly upon a building, vehicle, structure or land in which identifies or directs attention to a product, place, activity, person, institution or business. These are all examples of what we call freestanding signs. There's a couple of different types. You have the banners, you have this is a pole sign, this is also considered a pole sign, this is a monument sign. These are menu boards. So these are all the different kinds of freestanding signs that there are. These are all wall signs. You have directory signs. You have, of course, building identification signs, what company is in there. You have signs that project from the wall. We have all kinds of portable and temporary signs. We have vehicle mounted signs. We have electronic message boards. There, there are non-planar or figural signs, banners, flags, pole signs, illuminated signs, projected or running signs, animated signs, real estate signs, government signs, multi-site, multi-sided signs and movable type signs. So when we talk about regulating signage, this is one of the most difficult areas to regulate because you do get involved in some free speech issues. So commercial speech in, in the Supreme Court in several cases is differentiated between commercial speech and non-commercial speech, where commercial speech are things like car wash, buy more Ovaltine or best tacos in the universe. Non-commercial speech are things that are more opinion or statement, like my dog for president. It's Girl Scout cookie time, the Cardinals stink, a, a cougar football player lives here, the little signs that you see stuck in the yard. We do look at it at aesthetics, not in terms of whether it's pretty or ugly, but whether it is, it constitutes visual clutter. Is it safe for the speeds of traffic? Can you actually read what's on the sign so that we can, people aren't slowing down and rear-ending each other? Is it proportionate to the property? And is, again, is it a visible at posted speeds? Slower, speed limits, you don't need as large a sign. Larger properties are going to need a larger sign. Um, this is one of my favorites. I call this one signs and lines. It's hard to see what's going on between all of the signs that are on this street and all of the power lines that are interfering with the site. This is something that I think we need to try to avoid as much as possible. I can't see the forest for the trees. You've got so many lit up signs, you can't see any of them. And let's just allow one type of sign. Well, this is what you hap- get when you allow only a projecting wall sign in an area. So there are a lot of different things that we need to be considering when we look at this. Where's my other one, Jamie? Okay, so the sign code amendments that we're talking about, and this is what the Planning and Zoning Commission will be talking about on the Tuesday, the third. The current outline of this sign code starts with the purpose, then the intent, then general sign regulations, then it goes into sign area, sign height, then the actual permanent signs that are permitted, the temporary signs, subdivision signs, the submittal requirements, exceptions to the sign code, prohibited, prohibited signs and non-conforming and unsafe signs. And this is kind of how it outlines out if you were to do a fly, a flow chart. You talk about in the permitted, permanent signs, first you talk about everything that's allowed in agricultural, residential, and then it talks about every single kind of sign. And then non-agricultural and residential, and then it talks about every single kind of sign. And then temporary signs, and then it, it groups those in different types of signs and then has various rules regarding the materials and location, time limits. Sometimes it refers to zoning where certain kinds are allowed, sometimes it doesn't. And then we have a whole section of subdivision signs that talk solely about permanent entry and identification signs, temporary advertising and so forth. This section presumes only residential subdivisions. It doesn't talk about an industrial subdivision. It does not talk about a commercial subdivision, just residential. So again, this is kind of how it all looks. We have all of this verbiage that just stacks up and stacks up. These are all the different signs that are discussed under non-agricultural and residential. These are all the ones that we talk about in ag and residential. And this is what it looks like. This is just the portions for wall signs in agricultural and residential district and non-agricultural and residential districts. Just wall signs. So in cleaning up the actual outline of how the chapter or the sign code would work, we're going to combine the purpose and intent, go to some definitions, talk about when permits are required, then talk about the general provisions, including height, area and design standards altogether, have a signed standard table, then talk about exceptions, non-conforming and prohibited signs, and then maintenance and repair. So the new proposed format would look like this. We're going to talk about all permanent signs, and under that, we'll talk about all wall signs. And in this zoning district, these are the maximum dimensions and these are the standards. And then this is the same with the freestanding. The temporary signs would be the same way. For each type of temporary sign, it'll tell you what zoning ordinance, zoning districts you can use them in, what the maximum dimensions are, and then the, the basic standards, how many are allowed, any other specifications, not to exceed 200 square feet, those sorts of things. So the, what looks like this would end up looking like this. Hopefully. So you would have a single-family residential identification sign. These are all of the zoning districts that they're allowed in. There's a difference, uh, AR 36 and AR four are allowed eight square feet. I don't know why they didn't allow eight, AR five to have eight square feet, but this is how it's done. The maximum for these zoning districts would be three square feet. And these are the standard, one or more per unit, maximum height 10 foot, name, and it tells you exactly what you can say on these signs. And the same thing with the single-family, multi, uh, single unit in multi-family, multi-family building or project identification and so on, so that it's a little bit clearer and more easily understood. And these would be, for instance, in the wall sign, we'd probably order these alphabetically so that they're a little easier to find. So this is our tentative schedule. We're, I, I'm hoping that we can get something in front of town council around July. It probably is going to be more like August or September. In terms of trying, you know, doing outreach with the business community, we included a letter in each business license renewal that went out. It's been talked about on the town's Facebook site that we're having the, the meeting that we had in January. We've talked to the members of the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to be going out and talking to the real, uh, the Chino Valley Realtors Association about some of these things. And then, of course, we have statutory posting and publication requirements that we follow. So that's, in a nutshell, the overall plan for revising this.
Okay.
Portion.
Before I take any questions from council, I just had a quick comment. In the, the first line in your situation and analysis, it says currently section 4.21 sign regulations is comprised of 22 pages of regulations, which are vague and confusing at best. That's something that I've been hearing for the last three and a half years, is you guys please fix the sign ordinance. This is long overdue. Thank you for wanting to tackle it. And thank you for giving it a generous timeline. As you said, you're hoping to get something in front of us early part of summer. I'm thinking it'll be later. We're going to get a lot of input.
Yes.
From our businesses. The good thing is at least we're coming to the table and we're talking about it.
Right. This is, it's, um, it's pretty bad when I can't figure out where to find regulations. Parts of it say, like, um, non-agricultural and residential, and then it refers to all commercial zoning districts. Well, why don't we just say, "commercial zoning"?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we need a wheelbarrow to take our UDO around, and we need to thin that down. Any questions on this side? Any questions on this side?
I've got all kinds of questions, but maybe we should, we're going to have meetings.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Lots of meetings.
Right.
But this is, uh, this is just sort of the warning shot, letting us know that, uh, that this is in the works.
Brace yourselves.
All right. It's, it's, it's great. Like I said, we're going to get a lot of input from the, from the businesses in the community, so. Excellent. It'll be our, it'll be our Merry Christmas gift if we can get it done by then. All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Mady.
Sure.
Uh, seeing as there's no questions, we'll move on to item number four. The, uh, discussion of an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to establish an agribusiness overlay district in consideration of amendments to commercial regulations in the UDO. And this will be a discussion item. Also, I hope you folks vandalized your, uh, your package. Thank you for giving us a, a little overview so we could write our questions.
Sure. And again, what I, the outline I included in the packet was something I just jotted down because I wanted to get some thoughts on paper in advance of working with the community on this. As we all be, are, all are aware, that there are a number of agribusinesses within Chino Valley that are currently regulated in the same manner as any other retail or commercial enterprise, and they're really their own animal. And, um, at the January 13th, uh, 2015 regular meeting of the town council, resident and agribusiness owner Norm Freeman, uh, shared his frustrations, and I'm sure the frustrations of many others, with the costly and onerous requirements for installing a permanent restroom in his facility, which is used sporadically by the public throughout the year for special events. As a result of discussions with Mr. Freeman, we, um, are proposing an agribusiness overlay to try to address some of the concerns and, and make things easier for agricultural businesses to function in town. So this is just a list of how the, uh, UDO currently defines some of the things that we'll be talking about in terms of aug- agriculture. Silviculture, I learned today, is forestry. Why not just say forestry? Including uses customarily incidental thereto. Agricultural business, we do define this, any business use allowed within the town limits of Chino Valley, providing the operation of such use has a Chino Valley business license and/or proof of filing IRS Form F. We're really not supposed to license ag businesses, and I'm not sure that how we could possibly have proof of filing a Form S, or Form F. You know, we can get a copy or we can ask them to submit a copy, but most of the information's going to be redacted.
Right. Uh, uh, would you like questions during this presentation?
Sure. I'll give it a shot.
I, um, I just think with the advent of medical marijuana, you need to show, I don't know if they'd file a form IRS F, but, um, we need to make it clear that, um, medical marijuana does not fall under this.
Yeah, it's one of the ones that I specifically excluded.
Okay.
Uh, a private arena, a public arena, how we define commercial, any activity which is conducted primarily for compensation or profit. Whoops. So which, to which zoning districts would the, would an overlay apply? Well, this is one of the things we need to sort out with the, with the ag community. Is it based on a minimum acreage requirement? Are we going to tie improvements for acreage, like you could have worker housing at a 10-acre minimum? Are we going to allow it in specific, uh, specific zoning districts that are specifically zoned agricultural, all the ARs? Or are we going to allow it in zoning districts where farming and agriculture are permitted by right, which is everything from an SR1 to an AR 36?
Mayor, can I jump in real quick?
Yes, sir.
And sorry to interrupt you, Reeve. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what an overlay was. When you define, when you create an overlay district, it doesn't apply like a zoning map to specific pieces of property ahead of time. You create an overlay district and it applies to the whole town. Everywhere inside of the limits of Chino Valley, this overlay district could exist. So based on criteria like what you see on the screen here, if the property meets the criteria for the overlay district, the rights from that overlay district touch down on that property and provide that property owner with the flexibility to do what's allowed within that overlay. But it's not like you're going to have a zoning map that says this piece of property, that piece of property, this piece of property. It'll be an overlay over the entire town, and whenever these circumstances are satisfied, the rights under that overlay are available.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Mady, I just needed a little clarification. They'll not be mandatory, but they'll be available, correct?
That's correct. They're available for the property owner to use if they so choose.
Okay, thank you. Probably if it, if it pleases the council, uh, if, uh, go ahead and finish your presentation. Hopefully, uh, our questions will get answered in the course. I've got several of them written down, but hopefully they'll get answered.
All right. So, and again, these are the kind of the questions that went through my mind is how are we, how would we manage this? How, how do you define these activities? Because this is something that we need, these are things that we need to identify. What ag, activities or uses are considered agribusiness? Well, horse or livestock shows, rodeos, fairs, ag exhibits, greenhouses. And this is where we need to be specific in our definition of, you know, non-commercial, so we don't have Color Spot doing, you know, oh, we're agribusiness. And specifically exclude medical marijuana as well. Other things that people would do in an agribusiness is having wedding facilities or special events, fundraising dinners, educational activities, farm and ag tours. You know, I've gone to a, uh, one up at Massey's for their tomato growing, which was quite interesting. So those are the kinds of things. A winery, the, the Granite Creek Winery is a great example of an agribusiness. And they do have some food service there. Anybody has any others, I'm happy to add them to the list. And some of the needs that agribusiness has, and certainly this is not comprehensive, again, this is just off of the top of my head. Worker housing, a lot of agribusinesses require extra help either year round or at certain times in the year. We need to define what an ag worker is. We need to, we need to figure out a way that we can add additional housing on site that will, that cannot be used, so that this can't be used to circumvent the multi-family prohibition in a single-family residential district. You know, conformance to residential building code for any residential uses. And then, um, clearly the development standards are a huge issue. So we need to develop a different set of development standards regarding non-daily commercial activities related to the raising of livestock or cultivation and production of crops. Dust mitigation rather than impervious surface. We, it's not useful for anyone to take ag land out of production or make it unsuitable for the, the very thing they want to do with it. If phase, uh, have a phasing plan for improvement so that you're not incurring all of these costs at once, so you can do these things in phase one, these things in phase two, these things in phase three. Exempt from drainage and grading permits for crop production activities, like disking before you plant. Well, you know, you're supposed to have a D and G permit for anything from zero to 50 acre, or 50 cubic feet, but that, yeah. But if you were to do site prep for a new, uh, a new building, that would be requiring a drainage and grading permit. Code compliance with other regulations, are there parts of building code that are counterproductive? But we still have to be mindful of health and safety issues. And especially important is to differentiate between public and non-public spaces because we have, um, we don't want to be regulating people's garages because they drive a tractor in there to fix it. So, um, to be able to determine where the public is invited in and where they're doing their activities versus what's the private property of the owner. And then, um, different parking standards based on previous attendance or current attendance rates rather than square footage, which is the general way we calculate the required parking, which doesn't really work here. Um, and then again, we're back to the sign code. So directional signage right now is limited to multiple residence uses and non-residential uses. An agribusiness could possibly be considered a non-residential use. They can't exceed six square feet or a height of three feet, not including the aggregate sign area, 25% of the area for business logo or identification. This is where it gets really good. Use number and location must be approved by the Site Plan Review Process, section 1.7, and comply with the ordinance. Site Plan Review Committee is a maximum of nine members, may include town manager, development services director, zoning administrator, town engineer, planner, economic development director, fire chief, police chief, parks and recreation director, public workers directors or their designees. After you get a recommendation out of the Site Plan Review Committee, you then have to go through the Planning and Zoning and Town Council approval process. Notification, public hearings, just to put up directional signs.
For six square feet.
For six square feet. Whoops. Off-site directional signage during events, the temporary A-frame signs are the most popular. You are allowed to have those in commercial or industrial districts or on public or institutional property. You're allowed one sign. You're allowed one sign 24 wide or 36 inches high, or one sign 31 inches wide and 40 inches You have to get approval of the time, date, location of portable sign from the Development Services Director and submit an annual fee upon application. You can't put it in the town's right-of-way or on town-owned properties unless it's a town event. You can't put it on someone else's property without written consent, and during hours of non-operation, you have to go get it and bring it back. So you can see how trying to do something and play by the rules is like a pinball game, especially for this sort of business, because there are so many different things going on. Clearly, this directional signage for six square feet, which, and the other thing is, it doesn't really say whether this is onsite or offsite. So, you know, if you want to put up a little sign that is, you know, two feet square, it says parking here, you have to go through all of that to be able to put up a sign that says park here.
Thank you.
So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have, any suggestions, any things you want to see added to it.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
There are a couple of things that with some of the businesses show kind of a lack of consideration for their neighbors. Lights in homeowners late at night, loud noises like shooting cannons off late at night, things like that. And, you know, frequently when they complain about the noise, it's late night or a Sunday when our police force is low. How that's going to be controlled, loud music, very loud bands. For the most part, most of our businesses are pretty considerate, but there are people who tend to lose sight of what's going on and forget that they have neighbors. I think that needs to be taken care of.
Oh, yes, those are definitely things that we will address. Thank you for bringing those up.
Okay. Any on this side? Yes, sir.
Ruth, what's the next step with this? You've identified a lot of things that need to be worked out.
Well, we need to sit down and talk with the ag community that came this evening, Norm and Lynn are here, and try to figure out, you know, we need concrete examples of how this is, well, obviously, how this is slowing them down and making things difficult for them. What are the really critical things we need to resolve? What are we looking at in terms of health, safety, and getting this going down the road? I'm hoping that we can do this pretty much parallel with the sign ordinance.
And Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Also, part of the objective to meeting with the agribusiness community would be to identify what things we might be able to bring to the picture that would help them. You know, there's the whole idea of taking your foot off their throat.
Right.
But then there's the idea of, is there some way that the town of Chino Valley could help support the activity as well? You know, going beyond a neutral position and actually trying to help that business sector. So I think that discussion also needs to be there.
Okay, that's a novel thought. Ms. Mayday, this, thank you for saying this will probably run parallel to the signage. I had written a question down, how many workshops do you estimate this one will take? Because this is also one that we need a lot of input from the agribusiness community. Not all of them will come to the table right off the bat.
Right.
And so you'll, there's a lot of folks that stay back, and they say, "We're going to adopt a wait-and-see attitude." So please encourage the agribusiness community. Have numerous workshops on it. Take your time and look at multiple scenarios.
Sure.
As Councilwoman Hatch pointed out, there are some, if we make the gate too wide, there's room for folks to hurt other folks.
Right.
If we make the gate too narrow, I don't know how you could make it much more narrow than this, but if we make it too narrow, then that doesn't do any good. This has been also broken for a great deal of time, so, yes, ma'am.
We do have some people here from the agricultural community. I wonder if we might take comments from them, if they're interested?
Sure.
I'd like to hear if they have any comments here at the beginning.
You bet. Well, I wanted to give our council a first shot at it, and I know we've heard from Mr. Freeman. I recognize. But I wanted to make sure our council had their questions answered pretty well. Yes, sir?
I got a couple.
Sure.
What is the definition of a legal non-conforming sign?
A legal non-conforming sign?
Which definition?
The short answer is, it was legal at one point.
Right.
But the code changed, and now it's no longer legal.
So it's somewhat grandfathered, then?
Exactly.
Yes. That's what that is. Do you don't want the actual chapter and verse?
No, please.
Or the zoning changed.
No, no, no. I like short versions, that's really good. And when I look at some of the rest of this, it's, the short version would be nice. I know it can't be done exactly that way, but to me, rather than looking at some of this and saying, "What can we eliminate?", I almost want to put it on the chalkboard and erase it and start over.
Right. There is a lot of that, I think, that we could do.
And just a moment, in my visiting with our town manager, I've suggested to him, rather than reinventing the light bulb, that we take a look at other communities and see if we can't get some rough ideas how they did. Yes, ma'am?
By way of history, and I know there's been a lot of comment and confusion about this, when I was running for office the first time, too many years ago to remember, the town had just had an outside company rewrite the UDO. And there were things in it, and I remember being asked this question when I was running for office the first time, that on any property, you could have two animals, period.
Mm-hmm.
And that, I mean, it was that bad. So we're dealing with a UDO that was written by an outside company and never really taken care of or revised properly.
As I said, it's been a long time coming. One other quick question before, and then we'll make sure everybody's on council has theirs. On item 2C, Part B, under, in B, you had greenhouses except medical marijuana. This one says wedding facilities. I don't know if there's a page number on it. The one that says agribusiness overlay district in our package.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm with you now. Yes.
Anyway, you have wedding facilities, special events, and then A is fundraising dinners, B is educational activities, C is farm-ag tours. And in light of what Ms. Hatch brought up earlier, we'll need to flesh out those definitions.
Definitely.
Rather than folks saying, you know, "I'm teaching how to, you know, teaching somebody how to run a rototiller, so therefore I can do all these things." But I assume there will be numerous workshops, and this will be a time-consuming thing.
Well, for instance, for the fundraising dinner, you'd have to be, you know, associated or in partnership with a 501(c)(3). So you could do it for the Boy Scouts, or FAA, or 4H, or, you know, the Verde Valley Water Coalition, or something like that, where there's, it's not just, "I'm going to raise some funds for myself."
We'll all be doing that in a few years. Okay, thank you. Oh, from the ag community, do we have anybody that wishes to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
For the record, my name's Norm Freeman. I live at 1096 East Road 3 South. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I understand how convoluted the code is, and to your definition, Councilman Turner, about what's the definition, which dictionary, okay? You know, it's, and I say that almost sarcastically, because every time we've asked a question on this, a part of code gets cited. And when we answer that and come up with a valid reason why that part of code doesn't apply, a new code book comes out, okay? To me, that's not a messed-up code. To me, that's interpretation of the code. When you've given staff the ability to use discretion, and they're afraid to use that discretion because they used it differently on the last project, something's wrong. My parents taught me, "Two wrongs don't make a right," okay? That you, as a body, can change the course of this. As Ms. Mayday pointed out, it's going to take time to work through this. You do need public comment. I would like to see work sessions, you know, where you guys take public comment. I'd like to have commented on that first item, but, because it applies to commerce in the town, okay? Another side of the cellphone tower, so I'll just send you all emails, and you can read all about it. But interpretation of the codes is very, very important. And you guys can, and lady, can make up a policy statement to help staff so that while they're reworking the code, the council could have a policy statement that might say, "Agriculture and commercial activities will not be considered a nuisance to the town." That might be a good place to start, okay? Just to kind of turn the page, to turn the troops around and let them look at things through a different perspective, which is one of, "Let's do something." To narrow the gate, when the town's basically dead, what are we worried about? You know, let's widen the gate, let's get something flowing through it, and then let's figure out if it makes any sense to manage it farther. There's not a lot going on. We trade one business for another. You know, everybody's happy that O'Reilly's is here, and nobody talks about Napa that went away. So what did we gain? Folks, in the newspaper, they say they want another grocery store. Yet another grocery store won't double revenue to the town? You know? Some people may not shop at Safeway, but you're not going to bring twice as many people in because there's another store. This community has to support the businesses that are here first. The businesses that are here now should not be more important to any of you than the ones, or the ones that are here now should be more important almost than a newcomer, because the ones that are here now are the ones that have put their money on the line, and they've put their blood and sweat into building their business and giving people jobs and doing for the community. The least town staff can do is interpret the rules that are on the books in a manner that meets, I think you're starting to give pretty clear messages, I really do. You know, you did it last week, you're doing it tonight. Let's not lose any more businesses before you guys get a chance to rewrite all these codes, because to me, it's real simple. In the last few years, agriculture and commercial have been blurred together, and I don't know who did that. I don't think it was the council that did that, frankly. I don't remember any council person in the last 10 years standing up and saying, "We've got to treat agriculture like commercial." I don't remember any of you doing that. But I do know people stand at this podium and say, "Well, we're just trying to get Chino Valley in line with what other communities are doing." Chino Valley isn't like any other community. Chino Valley was the breadbasket for northern Arizona. Chino Valley was dairies, it was agriculture. Herm Federwisch is here tonight. He's a very senior board member from the Chino Valley Irrigation District. He has a lot of history. A lot of you don't know that the Chino Valley Irrigation District's predecessors started in the late 1800s. It certainly predates the state. It's the reason Chino Valley's here. That agriculture, not only did agriculture build our state's economy, it is Chino Valley's main economy. Now, growth played an important role between 2000, 2008. You know, the town grew about 50%. Those folks that came in that period didn't understand the agricultural heritage of our community. A lot of those folks are living in developments that were built on farmland 10, 15 years ago. The very reason we have a lot of the subdivisions we have now is because a farmer converted his water for development use, okay? And that land was sold and houses were built. Two-thirds of this community understands how it was 15 years ago, 10 years ago. So I'm not going to buy that council messed this up, that council changed the UDO. I think somewhere along the line, somebody started treating agriculture like commercial, because that's what it looks like. Ms. Mayday put some slides up, and I can tell she's trying to sort that out. Agriculture is not commercial. Agriculture is very, very at risk, more at risk than a lot of commercial enterprises. You, one thing that Ms. Mayday put up earlier, talked about public and non-public areas. I have a, you know, when you're a farm and depending on the event you're doing, areas change, that's going to be very difficult. My argument with one member of town staff is, you know, he's saying, "Well, it's not a farm, it's a parking lot." No, it's not a parking lot. It's a farm. It depends on the event, it depends on the season, it depends what's planted where as to what's what. Farmers don't get out on their quads and stir up dust all day on farmland, because it'll blow away. Farmers take care of their land. They don't want to be out, they work from sunrise to sunset, sometimes later, not that they want to, but they take care of the land, or the land won't take care of them. You know, a lot of the nuisance complaints we have in this town aren't from farmers. They're not from agriculture. And so let's not, let's separate that. And I really would like to see you folks consider doing that with a policy statement, just so it's loud and clear to staff that agriculture is not a nuisance, commerce is not a nuisance. And it's too bad we have to say that, but your comment about get their foot off their throat, you know, "Yeah, I can't breathe." And there's no, it's uncalled for. And so let's change that. The Chino Valley Irrigation District, Herm's come to a couple of meetings recently, he's come to hundreds of meetings before that. They used to pay him not to come to meetings. But they very much want to work with you in a less formal setting. Chino Valley Irrigation District, because it predates the town, and let's remember, when we talk about aligning Chino Valley with other communities, Chino Valley's the new kid on the block. If Chino Valley wants to have a competitive advantage over Prescott and Prescott Valley, Chino Valley is actually going to have to have easier standards rather than stricter standards. If you want to draw business in here, make it a lot easier to do it. We don't need nine people and multiple committees to have a sign or to pull a building permit. When I came off planning and zoning 15 years ago, we had it where agriculture could build bigger buildings without having to pull a building permit, because agriculture needs to do that. The continuous acreage that Mrs. Mayday is talking about makes sense. You know, the bigger farms have bigger requirements than the smaller ones. Two acres is a magic number, because ADWR will let you irrigate two acres of land on a domestic well. You go beyond that, you have to have a water right. You know, so there are common sense things you can apply to this that help you filter out that, kind of that nonsense maybe that you want to avoid. But again, there's so little going on, I'm not worried about the nonsense right now. I just want to get things moving again. And not, you know, other communities, it's sad when other communities are easier to go do business in than the new kid on the block. The new kid on the block should be hustling. This community should be hustling. It should be making it easy to come here, and they're not. But in the future, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, the Chino Valley Irrigation District has a lot to offer. We have a lot of assets that you folks need to know about. Some members of town staff think that our delivery ditches are drainage ditches, and when people, Councilwoman Hatch knows about what can go wrong, you know, with the irrigation system when people do stupid things. But we're a water delivery district, we're not a drainage district. So not only do we have to work through code, but we've got to work on mutual respect, because there's been a real disrespect between the irrigation district and the municipality, okay, over the years. And we need to fix that. We can help each other. Chino Valley Irrigation District has assets where if we could work with the town and the town could work with us, I think we could bring benefit to all the citizens, and so...
Okay, thank you, thank you. I wanted to keep us with the agricultural, but thank you.
Well, it is. You have to have irrigation to have agriculture, so...
I understand that, but if we get off into the CVID and continue onward, oh, thank you.
Well, that's agricultural in nature, and that's, we need to talk about that, because your general plan has agribusiness overlays where there is no irrigation water. You, and according to state rules, you can't irrigate crops over two acres in an AMA without a water right. When I go to the state, understand too that agriculture doesn't need this town to regulate it, because we've got the county, we got the feds, we got the state, we've got the EPA, we've got all kinds of civic-minded environmental groups. You know, there's a lot of regulation, and it's just getting hard, and it should be an asset. It should be, the things we do are good for the community.
You bet. No farms... No farms, no food. Thank you.
None you'd want to eat.
All right. That's long been a sore spot with me. Other members from the business community or agribusiness? All right, thank you. Oh, we will be doing multiple workshops on this, correct, Ms. Mayday?
Yes, I'm assuming the direction from council is to continue to work on this?
Yeah, we're not allowed to vote on anything tonight, but...
That's the hint?
That, I believe, is, the council is anxious to see this move forward.
Sure.
All right, thank you. All right. That is our last item on our agenda tonight. Mr. Wojcicki was kind enough to call for the motion to adjourn last week. Who wants to ask for it this week? Mr. Turner?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
I thought he wanted me to do it again.